...in fourteen political debates sponsored by the Mount Vernon News. I'm Samantha Scholes, news managing editor, and I thank you all for joining us tonight for what should be two exciting debates. I'm probably more nervous than the candidates, so. Our candidates will present opening statements which will be followed by questions presented from myself, Marty Tracy of Noxpages.com, and Curtis Newland of WQIO WMVO. They will then follow that with closing statements. Please allow me to introduce our debaters in the race for the Knox County Commissioner seat, Republican incumbent Roger Reed, and challenger, independent Eric Waschansky. I ask that you be an attentive and courteous audience. Please turn off your cellphones and hold your applause until the conclusion of the debate.
Which side do you want?
It doesn't matter to me.
I think you drew the short straw, so you go first.
Yeah, I did.
Mr. Waschansky, your name was drawn to start us off. You have three minutes for an opening statement which should answer the simple question, who are you and why are you running?
Well, my name is Eric Waschansky. I'm from a small town back in Pittsburgh. I moved here eight years ago with my wife Tina. I work down at Aerial Corporation as a maintenance supervisor. We have a grown son, a granddaughter to seven, and three dogs. I got brought here, I had a job opportunity through Aerial Corporation, and accepted, and we moved here, and I really like the county, the community, and the people here. Whenever I got out of high school, I joined the Navy, served three years, got out of there, went to mortuary science school back in Pittsburgh, and after I left there, money was a little tight, moved out, come back to Ohio, and start working through, going, building through management classes and getting supervisor positions, and just kinda went from there. The reason why I'm running for this position is, like I said, there's a lot of nice people here, and I see a lot of things in the county that really needs addressed. Just with the Fletch case that went on, with the dog pound, there was a, we had meetings with one of the commissioners, and they were supposed to respond within thirty days. We never did get a response back, and here it is in September. I want to change that. I want to make sure that I'm a voice for the people. I want to hear what the complaints are, the issues are, and get back to you in a timely manner. It's, like I said, a real nice community that we have. We need to build on the leadership. We have to get a better budget going, and with my background, with the leadership classes that I've taken, I've taken a business law class, I believe that I can do that to make things go the way they should. Thanks.
Mr. Reed?
Is this the opening statements? Okay. I am Roger Reed. I am finishing my first term as a Knox County Commissioner. I am from Fredericktown and a lifelong resident of Knox County. My mother Geraldine resides in Mount Vernon. My sister Deb and my brother reside in Fredericktown. I have two children, four grandchildren, and was married to Kathy, who passed away in April of this year after forty-six years. The county commissioners are the taxing, the budgeting, the appropriating, the contracting, the purchasing authority. We handle a very, a variety of administrative functions, and along with immediate office staff, we have seven department heads that report to us. As a commissioner, we serve on a number of boards and committees. My current assignments are the Area Development Board, the Station Brake Board, Delaware, Knox, Marion, Marl, Solid Waste Board District, and the Chairman of the Emergency Management Board. Before coming, before coming a commissioner, I was the Mayor of Fredericktown for sixteen years, and served as the Dog Warden for four years. Previous to that, I worked for Rolls Royce for twenty years. I first ran for commissioner because I felt I had good government experience I could bring to the position, and have worked with the higher revised code, and have dealt with many of the same situations. I believe my background has helped me be an effective county commissioner.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our first question. In 2013, the Board of Commissioners garnered enough local government support to consolidate the two 911 dispatch centers. The consolidation cost $500,000, which was projected, which was over the projected cost by $100,000. What are the advantages and disadvantages of a consolidated center? Where do the extra funds come from? And why was this a good use of county resources? Mr. Reed, start, please.
Well, the overage that you're speaking about came because we felt that there should be some room for expansion, so there were some upgrades that we did which cost extra. We could've kept it at the $500,000 and not had any problem, but because we're trying to look down the future, at possibly expanding the 911 to maybe other counties, is why we went with the upgrades and was the capability of expanding.
Do you believe that was a good, a good use of county resources?
Oh, absolutely.
Anything else you'd like to add? Advantages or disadvantages?
Well, the advantages, I just told you, is that the expansion, we'll be able to expand and take on other counties, and matter of fact, we're in negotiations right now with another county.
Thank you. Mr. Waschansky, same question?
Well, with the expansion, whenever you put together a budget to put a project together like that, you need to look forward to expanding, to take on different counties and whatnot. To sit down and put a budget together, it's hard, but, like I said, you have to look towards the future, see what your capabilities are now, figure in, sit down and figure in what money you will need, and if you're gonna go over, you should have enough to where you stay within your budget, and whenever you do, look for that expansion. If you, if you have enough for that year to expand, that's, that's great, but you also have to look and see what you're gonna need for the rest of, the rest of the money where that would be allotted to.
Thank you.
I'm Marty Tracy from Noxpages.com. Good evening to you both.
Good evening.
One of the duties of the county commissioners is to promote strategic development of the Knox County community. I got that off your website, and I already knew that anyway. Infrastructure, it's essential for new companies looking for a place to locate. What plans do you think need to be implemented to improve the infrastructure in Knox County, particularly water, wastewater, roads, and bridges? And Mr. Waschansky, you can go first.
Well, first of all, you have to make, you have to make the county more attractive to bring small businesses in to get started. Like I said, you sit down, figure out a good budget, see where you have to go with it, get your land put out, talk to different companies to see what their needs are, what they're, what they need to put in, what they're gonna require, and see, just kinda negotiate with them to see if they're willing to come in, what kind of jobs they're gonna give out, and what revenue we're gonna pull from them.
Mr. Reed?
Infrastructure is really not the county commissioner's responsibility. The infrastructure that would be needed to attract businesses is solely up to the city. Now, if it's gonna be out in the county, then yeah, the infrastructure for the water and sewer, which we just did upgrade our water and sewer, so, you know, there's a lot of room for expansion there. So, infrastructure in the city, that, that would be entirely up to the, and, you know, roads and bridges and stuff, that's up to Mr. Henry, which is elected official just like we are, and a county engineer.
Thank you.
I'm Curtis Newland with WMVO and WQIO Radio, and of course, economies is the number-one driver of any community. How do you see the condition of Knox County economically? Please identify some of those financial strengths and weaknesses of the county, and include where you would target cuts or add funding. And we'll start with Mr. Reed.
Well, right now, our, our budget is around thirteen, fourteen million dollars. It's very stable, and our carryover, carryover levels are, are good and improving, and definitely no increases in taxes, and our county sales taxes are lower than any surrounding county. What was the rest of your question? I didn't...
Some of the weaknesses. You mentioned some of the strengths. Now, some of the weaknesses of the county, what you would identify?
Weaknesses.
For finance, for financial purposes.
Well, you know, we can always use more income. We could always use more businesses, so, and that's why I serve on the Area Development Board, and we're constantly talking and dealing with companies to try to entice them to come to Knox County, to bring more revenue to, to the city, to the county, and the residents of Knox County.
And finally, would you target, what would you target as far as cuts or adding, adding in funding to the budget if you were to do one of the two?
Cutting?
Cutting or adding?
Well, hopefully don't have to cut, and we've worked very diligent to not have to cut. If we had to cut, it would be discretionary, probably discretionary funding, and I know there's probably some in the audience here tonight that probably wouldn't like to hear that, but discretionary funding, it would have to be one that you would have to look at.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Waschansky, I'll repeat that because I know there's a lot there. Economies is the number-one driver for any community. How do you see the condition of Knox County economically right now? And then identify some of the financial strengths and weaknesses, and where you would target cuts or add funding?
Well, first of all, the condition, the conditions in Knox County, it seems to me, like I said, I lived here eight years, and it seems to me that we're kinda at a standstill. There's no progression being made. We would have to get more people to be, to wanna come to this county, to put small businesses in, to grow our economy. As far as Mr. Reed said, coming in under budget right now, there should be no reason for cuts, and if we're under budget right now, there should be a way to sit down, distribute the money where needed, and go year to year and maintain what we have. If we're, if we're doing this right now, the way, and coming in under budget, there should be no reason for cuts. We need to work on the roads, get the roads in, up to par, truck routes, there's a lot of, a lot of money that, that could be distributed out that isn't. There's mention of the Water Department and expanding. That, I don't believe that project's 100% complete yet. I mean, there's, I've been down, I've been down to the Water Department, and it's, there's still some upgrades need taken care of, plus the safety for, for the guys down there need addressed. So, we should, like I said, we shouldn't have to cut any, anything out of the budget if we're already under. If we're doing, if we're maintaining right now, there should be a way to sit down, hash out a budget, get what we need, and pull small businesses in here to grow our economy.
Earlier this year, the commissioners, all Republicans, committed $200,000 to the county engineer, also a Republican, for a new building, but have continued to deny requests from the juvenile court judge, a Democrat, for improvements to the building utilized for juvenile programs. Should decisions be based on political affiliations? And if elected, what information will you use to determine your vote on issues? Mr. Waschansky?
That's, the whole reason why I'm running independent is because I don't want to have to maintain one side or the other. Being independent, I can go right down the middle of the line, do what's right, and that's the only thing that I want to do. What's right for the, the community and the people. There's, I'm, like I said, I, I'm there to figure out why there's such a wall between Democrat and Republic. You know, they put aside money, and it's kinda like a, a company on the stock market. Whenever you're on a stock market, you just wanna please whatever investors you have, and that's what's going on right now. I just wanna get in here, do what's right, grow, grow the county the way it should be.
Mr. Reed?
Would you repeat that question, please?
Sure. Earlier this year, the commissioners, all Republicans, committed $200,000 to the county engineer, also a Republican, for a new building, but have continued to deny requests from the juvenile court judge, a Democrat, for improvements to the building utilized for juvenile programs. Should decisions be based on political affiliations? And, in your case, if reelected, what information will you use to determine your vote on issues?
Well, the, the D and the R to me has absolutely no, nothing to do with the decision. Jim Henry has been needing a building for probably twenty years, and that has been a request of his for the whole time that I've been in office, and then even before that. And the funding was there from him and us, and so we decided now was the time to build a building. He doesn't have any place to have any meetings. He has to find someplace if he's gonna have someone come in, meet with other engineers or any type of meetings, he has no meetings facilities, his building is so small. And the reason that, it has nothing to do with Jim Rohnk being a Democrat, it has everything to do with who might be our next juvenile judge. We wanna sit down with either Jennifer or Jeff and find out exactly what they want, because Jim Rohnk's gonna be retiring. So, that's the reason, the decision we made, why we made the decision we did. It had nothing to do with a D or an R.
Can I, can I add something to that?
No, I'm sorry.
Our county, like most communities across the country, is dealing with a heroin epidemic. The problem is something that law enforcement and the courts have said they can't alleviate on their own, so what, if anything, can county government do to reverse the problem? And Mr. Reed gets to go first.
Well, I'm not on that committee, but Teresa is, back here. It's a task force that has been developed along with the county and other entities to try to address the, the epidemic of heroin and any kind of a drug. And so, that's something that, that we just implemented and has just started, so hopefully that that will help alleviate some of the problems that we have with the drug issues that we have, and we all know that we have it.
Mr. Waschansky?
We need to implement a task force, you know, put some funding aside just for that cause. There's, there's a big problem with drugs, and it's not just the heroin, it's prescription drugs and, you know, kids getting stuff out of medicine cabinets at home. We need to figure out some kind of program to get the younger generation to be more involved with, with different sporting events, or work, or even school. That's what a lot of it is, you know, they don't have a whole lot of background, and nobody's showing them the way to go. Now, whenever it comes to the drug trafficking problem, they, you know, we need to step up, like I said, put a task force in place, just for that reason, and put a little stiffer penalty on it. It's not just a slap on a wrist, or, you know, six months in jail. Whenever you're, you're caught with a lot of narcotics, or heroin, or pills, you know, pain pills, there should be a lot stiffer penalty on that than just a little slap on a wrist, and it comes back and, and they just do it again. So, if you can get, get some of that off the streets, get programs put in, put in place, I think it, it, it won't all go away, but it's a start.
There are a number of industries in the county, including large employers, as you know, like Aerial and Rolls Royce, and there's a lot of counties in the state of Ohio that have seen industries that have been here for a long time that have been very stable, such as those two, and went away, and many of those counties were unable to be proactive or didn't, weren't proactive, or didn't have a choice in the matter about protecting those businesses and industry. How does Knox County, one, protect the industry that is already here, and is there any way to, to help lead in its growth?
Well, as far as Aerial goes, Aerial's been growing for, for years, and I've seen the budget for Aerial to 2018, and it's not going anywhere. Rolls Royce, as we know, was sold to Siemens. Because of our, because of Rolls Royce's testing facilities, I believe it will stay. There's other circumstances for other companies. You have a lot of overseas people cutting costs, and it hurts the economy around here. Can't do a whole lot about that. You just have to, the companies just have to be more proactive, right along with the community, the county, and meet the needs that, to keep them here.
Mr. Reed?
The, the commissioners have met with, well, Rolls Royce and Siemens. Siemens probably twice, maybe three times since the, the transaction, I think it has taken place, but we have met with them at least three times, two or three times, and we've met with Rolls Royce even prior to that. But, you know, the city of Mount Vernon has been very proactive as far as doing whatever they can to improve the intersections, help get the stuff delivered out of the city the most efficient and effective way as possible, and so, and, you know, and I'm on the area development, and so we're constantly talking about incentives, those types of things to, to help companies that, that are here to stay here.
Thank you.
The Board of Commissioners schedules meetings on Mondays and Thursdays. If elected, will you be a part-time or a full-time commissioner? And could you please explain your strategy to be available to other elected officials, your constituency, and the media? Mr. Reed?
Well, anybody that knows me knows I have been a full-time commissioner. I'm in the office every day, and my cellphone number is given out on my business card, so anybody that needs to talk to me can have access to me anytime they, they want. That has been my practice, and it would continue to be my practice, is to be a full-time commissioner and be accessible to anybody that needs help.
Mr. Waschansky?
I do work at Aerial, Monday, Monday through Sunday, or I'm sorry, Fridays through Sunday. I will be in the office the, the rest of the week. My phone number's available to people right now. They, I have people stop at the house to ask me questions. I don't mind, you know, I will always be accessible, and one thing that I'd like to have done is the Monday and Thursday meetings at 10 o'clock, I'd like to change that to a 7 o'clock meeting, to where people can get off of work, come in, see the issues, if it has anything to do with their property, or where they live, or just kinda be more involved, so they can come in, sit down, listen, see what's going on, and a little communication goes a long way, and that's what, that's one thing that I'd really like to, to change, is communicate more with, with the people in Knox, and I will, I will always be available.
Is the Knox County Animal Shelter a moneymaker for the county, or is it a place to humanely house homeless dogs until they get adopted, or both? Also, what, if anything, has the change in the volunteer program done to eliminate concerns with how the shelter was being run? You get to go first.
Well, the dog shelter, it's, it's not a huge moneymaker, it's, but there's a lot of, there's the volunteer program that was shut down after the Fletch case. They had special needs students coming in, kinda learning to adapt more, get a little more training to, to get out in, in the, in the county and be more productive. The volunteer programs were all shut down. The volunteer, they reinstated them, the volunteers that were there are no longer there. They did a wonderful job with the dogs. You know, we had people every day down there, just walking them, taking care of them, paying out of their pockets to have shots, broken leg fixed, treats, just everything, and they, they enjoyed it. They, they put their time in, and they really loved doing what they did. The Fletch case kinda blew up, which it should've never went the way it did, but for whatever reason it was, the volunteers were suspended. They did try to reinstate it, but it's not the same as it, how it used to be. There's a lot of kinda red tape to get through, and it shouldn't be that way. There's a lot of people out there that are animal lovers, that wanna, wanna spend time to rehabilitate the dogs, to get them a new home, and with a long, a longtime somewhat citizen at the dog pound, I don't see why we couldn't take some, a dog that's been there six months and have a, a sell on them, instead of a hundred dollar adoption fee, a $35 adoption fee, or $50 adoption fee, because there's a lot of people that want dogs that maybe can't come up with that $100, and once a dog's in there for so long, it'll get kinda stir crazy, you know, being locked up in a cage and, and stuff, so.
Mr. Reed?
Let me start by saying, without the volunteer program, the shelter would be in big trouble. Being there four years, I know what volunteers do. There's one sitting right here in front of me that was very faithful, and so I take no credit for anything that happened at the dog shelter when I was there. It all was because of the volunteers. We have implemented, implemented a new program. We've got two coordinators, and this whole issue with Fletch, you know, definitely got blown out of proportion, and it shouldn't have, I agree with, with Eric, but it did. But anyhow, so we implemented this, we put two new coordinators out there, Marla McCutcheon and Sandy Drining, and they, they work with the volunteers, and the volunteers are the backbone of the, of the, the program. Our rescues and our adoptions and, I forget the other one, is, is up, and our euthanasia rate is probably one of the lowest in the state of Ohio. And so, I think that attributes to the, the volunteer program, because the volunteers are the ones that, that socialize the dogs. You know, most of the time, the, the guys are out picking up the dogs, they don't have time to do that, and so because of the volunteer program, they, they're the ones that socialize the dogs, which makes them easier to adopt. That's why our adoption rate's up, our euthanasia rate's low. I must be out of time.
Time's up. Thank you.
Sorry.
This will go to Mr. Reed to start with, and we're kinda turning to geographic question here of the county. In what areas of the county, geographically speaking, do you see issues? What are those issues, and what would you like to do about them? Mr. Reed?
Well, we just, we just, in Brown Well, we just, in Brown Township, we got a critical infrastructure grant, and we were able to replace, I think, 10 bridges in that area through this grant money. And so, that's the area that we concentrated in. Danville's another area. We concentrated, we put a lot of money in Danville. We got CBG money to help them put some water lines in, new fire hydrants, those types of things. And so, you know, your lower income people, areas, is what I definitely would concentrate on.
Okay, Mr. Wyszansky?
Well, to be 100% honest with you, I really can't elaborate on it a lot, but like Mr. Reed said, you have to hit the lower income areas first to build up some of the housing and roads and whatnot.
Okay, thank you.
One of the largest budget considerations for any department under the county's umbrella is for personnel. Over the last few years, there have been several personnel issues that have created headlines and even lawsuits. As an employer, what is the role of the Board of Commissioners? And what can the board do to improve employee performance and overall employee-employer relations? Mr. Wyszansky?
Well, first, you have to get together with them, work with them, see what the problems are, what the inconsistencies are where they work, make sure there's a safe and a good work environment for them. There should be no reason why you can't sit down with any of the employees and go over what the dislikes are, what the likes are, what can make them appreciate their job more. There's a lot of county employees out there that are unhappy, that I spoke with, a lot of unsafe work is going on that I've come across. And there's, like I said, there should be no reason that I wouldn't be able to sit down, go from job site to job site, talk to the people, get their concerns, and work it out.
Mr. Reed?
Well, I am certainly not aware of any unsafe work problems. We have supervisors that if there are any unsafe problems, then they come to us. So, that's news to me. But training, 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 that's what you do. And then you take care of a problem as soon as you find out about it. There isn't a business that I know of that doesn't have issues and problems. But as soon as you find out about it, you address it and you take care of it.
We have some time, so we have time for a couple more questions. Can we go back to the dog shelter for a moment? When the Fletch case was going on and the volunteer program was shut down, those volunteers, as I understand, were not permitted to be volunteers again at the dog shelter. Are those volunteers allowed to come back now? Mr. Reed?
That would be up to the coordinators. They're coordinating all the volunteers, screening them, applicants. I, as far as I know...
So, they would be allowed to come back if they want to?
I think so.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to comment on that?
From my understanding, they are invited back. But with the two new people in place, it's a lot different than it was. There's some activity down there that is not very pleasing to the old volunteers. You have Justine that was there that worked in, she worked in the I can't remember what it's called.
Bonding room?
No, not the bonding room. Isolation side. She did receive a paycheck for four hours a day. She spent all day there, cleaning out kennels, walking dogs, getting them used to people. Sometimes they'd come over to the adoption side. My wife and a few others would work with them, train them, teach them commands. Right now, it's not that way. You have the girl working isolation, strictly cleaning. That's, there's no hand-to-hand with the dogs. She just cleans the cages and kind of just stands up front and talks a little bit. But there needs to be more involvement with the animals. They're not, and that's not what they're doing right now. And with the way that the volunteer program's set up today, the old volunteers, they just can't work that way. There's nothing really being done with the dogs to rehabilitate them, to get them adopted.
Can I, I guess I'd have to respectfully disagree with that. What we have implemented also with the coordinators, they are involved in every decision now made with euthanasia. And if, say, the dog warden doesn't agree, or the coordinators don't agree that a dog should be euthanized, then the vet gets involved. And then we also have a specialist that we have got on a retainer that will come in and evaluate a dog and tell us whether that dog should be euthanized. So, I think we're headed in the right direction. I think we've got a lot of good things in place, and I expect good things.
I want to go back to the budget for a second, as there was discussion of being under budget for the year. Is there any thought from either of you two about reducing the next budget because of that, if you don't need the money? Or rainy day fund, or some sort of investment with that? Liked to hear your discussion, and we'll start with Mr. Wyszansky.
Well, I wouldn't take away from the budget. I mean, if we're under budget, that's a good thing. You never want to be over. But, no, like I said, you go on with the future of putting budgets together, and you can implement that money to different programs, just like we talked about with the task force for drug trafficking. You know, that money can be placed there. That money can be put to where we can build a place where small businesses want to come in. Like Samantha was saying, asking about the juvenile hall. It needs upgrades. You know, that money can be put to use everywhere. You know, when you fill out a budget for the year, it's not written in stone. If you're under, that money can be put somewhere else for little projects. And I'm not saying you have to tear the whole place down and rebuild, but new windows, or an upgrade in the heating, you know, that money can be put to use somewhere. You never want to take, you don't want to take it away.
Mr. Reed?
I look at it like you would run your home. If you have extra money, there's nothing wrong with having a rainy day fund. There's no reason why you shouldn't put it back, and if you need it, it's there. To just spend it on frivolous things would be foolish. So, I would say a rainy day fund, but, you know, there are projects that we have right now that could be done, but because of the, you know, we lost a million dollars in investments from, what, '08, '09, somewhere in there. And then the local government funds, we've lost probably close to that in that. And so, you know, we've lost, it's going to take a lot of money to even get back to where we once was with the revenue. But because, I think, because of good management from the commissioners and watching the budget and controlling the budget, and sometimes that's an issue with some of the elected officials, and some of them are here tonight. But, you know, sometimes you have to say, why do you need that? And, you know, so, there's absolutely nothing wrong with having a rainy day fund, money put back in case you need it.
Thank you.
I think now we'll go ahead and move to our closing remarks. Mr. Reed, you have two minutes, sir.
It won't take two minutes. Samantha? I am a full-time commissioner who is accessible to the public and willing to devote the time necessary to do the job the citizens of Knox County expect. During my first term, I have worked to make sound decisions while also being financially responsible. If elected, I will continue to work with the other commissioners to look for the opportunities to make the county government more efficient in the areas where we can collaborate with other local governments. I appreciate the full support of all the Republican elected officials for my reelection, and I also want to thank the citizens of Knox County for the support they gave me in the last election. And I would also ask for your vote November the 4th. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wyszansky?
Well, I'd like to start by saying thanks for everyone being here. What my intent is, is to knock that wall down between the Republicans and Democrats. I'm running independent, which will show up on the ballot as a non-party. I want to be here for the people. I want to give the voice back to the people, communicate, bring the people that have concerns and issues back in to where they need to be. You know, yeah, we're going to have to sit down with the other commissioners and make some decisions, but I want the people of the community to know what's being talked about, what decisions are being made, get input, you know, from everyone that lives around in the community to let us know that if it's a good decision, bad decision. And if we decide on something, I will make sure I explain why that decision was made, pro or con. You know, everyone, you can't satisfy everyone 100% of the time. But if you communicate with people, let them know why the decision was made, why the money went towards one thing and not another, it's a better understanding, and people feel better about what's going on. But that's the whole thing. We need to get that communication highway built back up and bring the people back in. And that's, like I said, that's why I'm glad to be running independent.
Thank you. Thank you both for joining us tonight. Would everyone join me with a round of applause for our candidates?
Charles Berry.